Meeting to order and do roll call.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planner and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from previous meeting in October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Minutes of prior meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Time for public comment. Anyone wishing a comment can come forward right now.
Are you a student?
Yeah, student at Northern.
Okay.
Class are you taking up local and state government with Sean Hobbins?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
You're the only one in the class?
We have to time like two different meetings throughout the semester, so it's my second one that I've been to.
That way to knock them off?
Yeah.
Where are you from?
I'm from Anomni, Michigan originally, so about two hours south of here, right on the border of Wisconsin.
On the way to Green Bay.
Yep.
All right, no public comment. We'll move on to new business. Six A, twenty twenty-five capital improvement program request discussion. Jason?
Yes, thank you. So capital improvement program, as you know, or CIP, is a responsibility of the Planning Commission per the state, Michigan State Enabling Planning Act. And we've been better about it in the last few years. And so what I wanted to do was provide you with a summary this time of department head requests. So you have, and it's generally going to be very similar to what you saw last year. So general fund, fire department, and then public works. The general fund also encompasses building and grounds and recreation. So you see, you know, the pickleball court project is in there. The softball improvements to the field. Apparently, there's going to be some more. And then there must be some Zamboni updates that need to be made for the ice rink. One thing I didn't realize is how much computers and tech equipment needs to be kept up on. For instance, I recently received a new workstation and a new laptop simply because Windows eleven is out. That's what we need to operate on, I guess, is the most recent version of those items. And so I know several of us staff in the office, myself and Planner Powers recently received new tech equipment, and I know that Manager Kangas is receiving a new computer or two and is having some funny issues with that. So those kinds of things also get wrapped into the CIP. HVAC mass balance, as you see there on the first page. So I don't know if you've ever sat in a meeting in the conference room, but if it's seventy degrees in the conference room, it's about sixty-two in the, or I'm sorry, in the main office, it's about sixty-two degrees in the conference room. So that has to do with balancing out HVAC system, which will be great, for sure. But then you get into the fire department, for instance, you know, they're still looking for an accessory structure, a water source up on five fifty. That's been ongoing. The ladder truck is something that I think is obviously super important to keep up on. And, you know, I think a lot of this has to transfer over from last year, or it was deferred, and it keeps being deferred, or it moves up a slot in its importance, but wanted to get that to you. I know the township board is going to start their budget meetings soon. And wanted to have this information to you for your review and comments ahead of them taking up budgeting for the twenty-five year.
Well, these are ranked in order of importance to each department, though, no? Because they're never used to me.
I'm not sure if they're ranked in importance, like, per this sheet, but the individual sheets would show their their ranking as far as essential, desirable, acceptable, or deferred, deferrable, excuse me. I can get that broken down for you if you'd like to see that. You know, I, the department heads were here, I think, last year, and instead of them coming this year for questions, I just told them, you know, if if there's anything that comes up at the planning commission level, they're free to reach out to them individually, or I can relay any kind of commentary or questions that you might have to them. But there's not a lot of change from this year to last.
Question, Jason. I can't recall in private, I think I've been through this now four times, at least. And I can't recall, do we take a vote and make recommendations, or are these just comments, or how do we do that?
It's desirable for the planning commission to recommend to the board the department heads' needs.
We would do that by a vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'd like to bring something up because since I've started on the planning commission, the number of homes on Eagles Nest Road and Buck Row have grown. And so if we add together the number of homes on Eagles Nest Road and Buck Row, plus the ones on Harlow Shore, plus the other ones up on five fifty, just before you get to the boundary with all township, you've got a hundred homes there, approximately. And, you know, we've had some dry high-warning summers in terms of fire. And I remember Mr., or Chief, is it Chief Shanahan?
Yes.
I remember he was here, and he talked about this water source for County Road five fifty. And so I'm thinking as as we progress into the changing climate, it seems to be drier summers and maybe some wetter winters. It's going to be a fire hazard. In fact, I think one of the residents of Middle Island Point, who was here commenting, Dr. Hanky, used to live in Harlow Shores, and his house burned down because of a, because of a fire. So that's a hazard there, and I'm concerned about it. And I would, and I know this fifty thousand dollars figure has been out there for at least three years, maybe four. Would it be inappropriate if, you know, if the commissioners would agree to entertain a motion to allocate five thousand dollars spread over five years, so that at least by twenty twenty-nine, we've we've reached the fifty thousand dollar level? Because otherwise, this is going nowhere, and the the potential need is growing. What would your comments?
I think that's perfectly viable.
Okay. Well, then, I for discussion purposes, I'd like to make a motion that with respect to the capital improvement, item number one under Fire Department, that five thousand dollars be allocated for every year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, and twenty twenty-nine.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, and then it would be fifty thousand.
Oh, ten thousand, I'm sorry, ten thousand. Thank you, I was not good at math. Ten thousand be allocated for each five of those five years, so that by twenty twenty-nine, maybe at least we'd have you know, maybe get a pumping station up there. They wouldn't necessarily have to go a water tower, you know, just draw it from the lake. Something like that. Anyway, that's my motion.
Is that in support of the rest of the document, then?
Oh, would it be appropriate to then make this with support of the rest of the document?
Yes.
Yes, I'll I'll do that.
Do you know what what the plan is for that fifty thousand, where they would want to put it, or what they would want to do? Doesn't seem like that much money to do something.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's an estimate, but there's also the cost of acquisition of a piece of property, and then clearing the property, and then putting the infrastructure in place. So it could be more than that, but I think also that we could work with the Fire Department through some of the revenue sharing that goes on with the tribe, thankfully, and perhaps FEMA, and put together a package that could accelerate the the project.
Will they be planning on taking it from the lake, or is there a water lane that goes up so far on five fifty?
No, there's no infrastructure up five fifty, which is the reason that we would need to likely get a drill a while.
So you could pump it from the lake and have to drill a while?
That's correct.
I think Dan Shanahan has addressed this before, and and we would probably be better served than than us thinking if we asked him what the real plan was, because I think he just said, the reason there's no money there, I think he said, we're not going to pursue it.
Well, I I disagree.
So you're wanting him to pursue it?
I want him to pursue that, and not at all at once, over spread it over five years, ten grand a year, so like, you know.
Yeah, I get, I understand that part. I think we would be best served to ask him what that fifty thousand was going to pay for, because I don't think that, as Jason said, it's nearly enough to do anything anymore. And I know they've looked at this for a while. But I understand what you're saying. There's lots of potential disasters waiting to happen up in that area now. And I do know there there have been some wildfires up in that area, and they must haul the pumper up there, and they must pump from the lake and go to the wildfires. I mean, you know, but but I think Dan could tell us which direction to go. These are the departments asking for this, right?
Yes, but, you know, this project is, we shouldn't just put it on the shoulders of Chief Shanahan. It should be a township-supported project.
Correct, and it'll go to the township board.
Right, I'm just
You're just proposing that we add that.
For is to get this going, whatever, however they decide to spend this fifty thousand dollars, which is probably going to be more, but if it's more and they decide to spend it, fine, but at least I'd like to prime the pump, so to speak, by allocating ten grand a year, so that at least five years from now, we'd have a a little bit of, you know,
A starting point.
An ante, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Just the problem. That's my motion, and with approval of the rest of the classes.
Because I have some questions about the rest of this. No one, no one else?
If you get a second, you can have some discussion about the rest of it.
Okay.
Looking for a second on Denny's motion? I'll second that.
Great discussion.
So so it looks to me like they want to allocate one million eight hundred thousand dollars next year to buy a truck. I don't know that we have one million eight hundred thousand dollars anywhere for capital expenses. I know, I don't know why it's in red.
I think that's a change that was made from from last year, so certainly at the first budget meeting, or whenever the Fire Department meets, you can ask them specifically about that, but.
So I think, I think we would be best served if we could all attend the budget session. Is it November eighth? Is that a Friday? I didn't bring in my phone, so it starts at like nine in the morning, and they're going to just run it from nine to two or three until we're done. So they're not going to do multiple times unless we have to. So I think I mentioned it last time. I don't know if it got in the minutes.
This is just a work session, though, and they're not voting on it right. Correct?
Correct, that's what you have to do, and then they'll bring it to a public hearing, and then we'll vote on it at a public hearing, but that's where the, I think that's where the department heads will be to answer questions.
So I can also do this. Tomorrow morning, respond to you with an email on specifically what that line item is and the reason for it being in red, et cetera.
And do you know, Jason, is this money, this Fire Department money coming out of the Fire Department millage that pays for equipment?
I don't have the answer to that.
I thought I remembered him saying that it had to be, because there wouldn't be enough money.
So and I I thought they just got hose this year, so I don't know if they need more hose.
Sometimes they don't take this out after they get it, so maybe it just doesn't get taken out. I know I've seen that before, where they come in here and they say, oh, we have that already, so you can cross that out.
I know.
Jason, can I ask a question now? When I made the motion, you then said, is that to approve everything else? Is that a necessity that, I mean, couldn't I just make a standalone motion on that one item?
To add it to the C CIP? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, then, I would can I rephrase my, I don't know, what do I do now procedurally? It's been moved to seconded. Can I amend it?
You can vote on it and vote it down and then restart.
Okay, fine, because I'll vote it down, because it looks like there's other things in there that I wasn't aware of that are controversial, and I wouldn't want to necessarily hold up this.
I wouldn't say they're controversial. These are your department heads requesting items that they need.
No, I mean, among our group here, Linda has some reservations because of the one thousand or one million eight hundred, and I'm just saying, I'd like just to move that one item about the pumping station or whatever, you know, for fire protection for north of five fifty.
So I don't know that I have reservations. I just have questions.
Why, and I I respect that you're
Yeah, yeah, understanding what's going on here.
So I I would, if we vote on this, I'd vote against it, and then I'd ref, and I, then I'd submit an amended motion or a different motion.
All right, well, let's just vote on it right now, and then we can just start all over and sort of what this, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So you want any renewed motion now?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion with respect to capital improvement from the Fire Department, item number one. County Road five fifty water source for fifty thousand, I'd like to make a motion to allocate in the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty twenty-nine, ten thousand dollars a year for that capital firefighting improvement item.
Y'all second on this?
Y'all second, then.
Okay. I guess my thought right away is that this fifty thousand was from a while ago, first of all, and who knows if this fifty thousand might have just been for a study, you know, and and not to actually do anything, so I I guess
Whatever it's for, I'm in favor of it.
Make a recommendation that they pursue it, but not even put any money into it.
Well, they put the money into it, Joe.
Yeah, but we don't know what the money's for.
Well, I know, but at least it's something, even if it's a study, I mean, I'd rather have something ready because there's nothing going now, and there's, and the next fire station is up at halfway by Big Bay, or north, even north of Halfway Village, so I don't even know what that is, you know?
You know, is if if you were just seeing fifty thousand, you might just be limiting it to that, where there could be more involved? And, you know, I mean, I don't know how that would work if if you're just seeing it fifty thousand, and then they want to put more into it. And, you know, we're just recommending fifty.
Let's see a couple of solutions, guys. One is to just put some emphasis on this well or the fire service itself. Second, let's get it in the master plan as a need and a goal and an objective. So you you can make all the motions you want and split it eight ways to Sunday. It, the the point is that it's in, it's in the CIP, and it has been for a while. And I will relate the planning commission's desire to elevate that project to, you know, a, an essential or desirable project.
Well, we can just vote on this, you know, and
Whatever it is.
On it, just so that they see that.
That's all it was, yeah, that's all it was meaning, that's what I thought it was.
By a vote, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All stop.
Ask about the Forestville to here on Woods Road that has a hundred fifty thousand allocated to it for what?
Yeah, that's been in there for a couple of years too, and I think we've been holding on to some funds that were designed to repair that area in the event that there was a change to the intersection at Commerce, Forestville, and Wright Street, because we wouldn't want to repair the road and then have it torn up again as a result of the new intersection configuration.
Yeah, well, even if you're on your project, you know, going down that road, you're not going to want to do anything till.
Right, even if, yeah, if infrastructure goes in, what have you, so, exactly.
Then one fifty is already allocated, so to speak, right?
Yes, as a result of the road millage, it's been there, yeah.
Like there are less requests to me than I remember, like, a whole lot of pages.
Yeah, some of them have been, you know, accomplished, and that's always helpful, too. Certainly to reduce the the asks or the, you know, the budgeting pressure on the board.
Do you need us to vote like right away on this, or would would it be okay if we waited till after the work session on that, if we went to that, so we'd understand it a little better, and we could vote on it then, or would you rather have us vote on it now?
I prefer to have it done now, yeah. I don't, like I said, I don't think there's any stark differences between this year and and last year.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion, then?
What would the motion be?
To accept the
Support the department heads' requests for capital improvement projects for twenty twenty-five and beyond.
Make a motion to accept the department heads' recommendations and projections for the capital improvement for twenty twenty-five and beyond.
I'll support that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Y'all sit on that, Jason?
Thank you, yes, and I'll include both motions. The one previous from Denny to emphasize the the request for the, some kind of water apparatus up on five fifty.
Does that work session, session work from a week from this Friday, then?
Is it the eighth? Yeah, well
I can resend that.
Two weeks from this Friday. This Friday is the twenty-fifth. Okay, then there's a Friday, like, is the second or? I don't know, maybe it's Friday the night.
Halloween is Thursday.
No, there's Friday the first. It's after the first, the eighth, okay.
I'll remind, I'll remind the planning commission when the the board budget sessions are, in case you want to attend.
Yeah, I don't think it hit the minutes from last time when I shared it.
I feel like your last motion was the same as the first motion. You put your you put your ten thousand dollars in, and then you approved it, and then your second motion was you just approved it. The the first time we did it was the same?
No, but this first motion also included the rest of the document.
Now, we just said we just approved the rest of the document, so we did the same.
Because I didn't know what, I thought maybe somebody was going to object to approving the whole thing, so I didn't know.
Gotcha.
I'd combine the motions.
Okay.
And it is, the budget work session is November eighth, starts at nine. It's going to be posted, should be posted.
It's here?
If anyone remind us.
Okay.
Anything else? Six B, twenty twenty-four master plan update, the business survey results.
This is just informational for you. I suspect that there'll be some goals and objectives derived from the results, but they're not, I mean, it it wasn't as well attended, if you will, as we were hoping, but there were some good comments that came out of, in some generalities. You know, in order to have a viable workforce, you have to have housing. Of course, some people want more signage. That was something that we discussed at length a number of years ago, and maybe it's time to discuss it again as far as temporary signs, but I think when you look at the corridor and how many signs there already are, adding more is something that the board and previous planning commission was somewhat against, to protect the aesthetic of the highway corridor. Of course, there's going to be comments about access, some of which we control through our access management principles, but some of it is also just a result of development, as it happened prior to access management principles. But, yeah, there were some good comments, and I think nothing shocking, really, to me, unless you guys found anything in there that was surprising. So that's just more informational. When S E H comes back, I suspect next month, we'll be starting to see parts of the document, and I'm sure we'll get a couple of goals and objectives out of this survey that was conducted.
I kind of like that one response, too much competition, seventeen percent. Thought there was too much competition.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't read, I read just kind of the summary.
I thought there were some interesting things in it. I read it, Tom, and I read all the comments. I I think there's a couple of things that we could do, and hopefully we'll see what they come back with us to us with, and then we can build from there, but, you know. We'll see what happens.
Jason, I have a question. So on the the second page of the summary, the, on the recommendations developed from business survey results, are those recommendations that you and Garrett drew from the survey that you would like to see considered by the steering committee for the master plan?
This will certainly be considered by the steering committee, but this is derived from S E H.
Well, this is actually from S E H itself?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss this in depth on the steering committee.
Anything more on the master plan? The unfinished business. So A, the draft E D A meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Yep, as requested, providing you with meeting minutes from committees and whatnot, so those are in there, as well as six B, which were just approved the other night from July for the Almost didn't need a meeting tonight if it wasn't for the CIP, but I'm glad we got together anyway.
Okay, and eight B, the draft recreation committee meeting minutes from July sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Of the trailhead coming along on the well road.
Coming along, yeah. The ground's been cleared, the slabs been poured. I think you'll be seeing some structure out there before too long, so. I haven't been out there yet, just seeing all the N T N blips on social media, the news, so.
What 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 is that development now? I mean, I know what, you know, we were talking about the area for the park and so forth.
Yeah, just going to stand up again, sorry. If you remember, we Yeah, just going to stand up again, sorry. Um, if you remember, we applied for a grant with N T N supplying the match. And we were unsuccessful with that grant application. But N T N's funding was still there. We were able to formulate some partnerships with the likes of Freco and N M U students in the construction management program, and we were able to piecemeal the parking lot and pavilion together this year loosely. Well, the pavilion will be done and the storage for the snowmobile that they use to groom, probably some extra tools and whatnot. So that'll be done hopefully before snow fly, and then in the ensuing years, we'll be able to complete the other amenities that we want there, or that were a part of that site plan originally.
And I guess kind of to go along with that, I saw that the township changed the dog ordinance, so.
That's not accurate. The state law has been around since nineteen nineteen, positive control of your animal wherever you are. People have been laissez faire, or whatever term you want to use, off-leash, walking their dogs. We recently posted signs, much to the chagrin of people who have historically been out walking on our private well road, utilizing that for a dog run. We had a couple residents came in and they were, you know, just one was more upset than the other, one was asking questions and was made aware that that is our property. The specific reason for the road was to access our wells, and now we're developing it slowly in some recreational capacities, and we're resigning it to let people know that they may see more activity on that road, and so as a result, we want people to take care of their dogs.
I guess I was, I was under the impression that it was an off-leash dog area in the past, but.
I mean, loosely, I guess it is, but, you know, we, we're not out there enforcing.
The rules have been there.
It's more, yeah, oh, yeah.
Was there something that happened?
No, there's just going to be more activity. Once you have a trailhead, there is going to be bikes, cars, interactions, and so you don't want dogs to be on the loose. For their safety and, you know, whoever's a passenger in the vehicle. And that was a board directive, by the way, that came, came from the top. As far as the signage goes.
Oh, do they have any plans on how they're going to enforce that?
Um, well, typically it's a sheriff's department response on a dog at large, so.
Hey, township board report, Linda.
Well. I guess we did the dog leash thing. So the board met on October sixteen. There was some discussion about sessions that we attended at the M T A meeting, and I had already handed you the opportunity to look at the handles. Jason has them now. I'm sure that there is a couple of things that interest everyone, and actually wonderful information to review if we move forward with that. Our county's, um, we did our couch of assessing department review. Delsey came and gave us some great information. Certainly, if you're wondering why we assess and how we assess and all those pieces, I would suggest you listen to the meeting because I could never repeat what she said. It's a lot of stuff. We also are purchasing three thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. They got a grant for some of it, and then we were to pay for the rest of it, so they'll have three new thermal imaging cameras available for this. We are putting the nineteen ninety nine Pierce fire truck as surplus, so someone may want to purchase it, so it will not be part of our fleet in the future. We are also eventually putting the two thousand six Ford ambulance up as surplus as soon as the new ambulance arrives, so there are all things there. If you are on a board and your term is expiring, you will have to reapply. So there was discussion that in the past, people were just asked if they wanted to continue, but that's not really the way it's supposed to work. Flynn talked to a couple attorneys and at the M T A, and they suggested people apply for their positions if they want to continue. So those people who have expiring positions would need to reapply if they want to continue. Mike Springer resigned from the Downtown Development Authority and the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority. He spent lots of years helping out the township, and he is now going to spend time doing other things. We approved the Michigan Township Association Policy Platform. Again, that's something that's online, and it's what M T A lobbies for based on what we all agree to when they're lobbying and licensing. And the next scheduled meeting is November sixth. And that's pretty much it. Probably the thing that got the most publicity was the dogs need to be on, on leash, but it also doesn't say under control.
Uh, positive control is the operative.
Control, yeah. So really, um, there was discussion about that, but, you know, you're going to have children riding those bike trails at the whatever that's called, the head.
Trailhead.
Trailhead. There's going to be lots of children, there's going to be lots of people, and I think the dogs freely ran and ran up to people, jumped on people, barked a lot, and that's can be fearful to many people, so we want it to be safe for the dogs too, because we don't want anything happening till people are done. We tried, Dave and I tried, went up the well road and it was gated, so we didn't get out in lock. So I think that gate's going to move as soon as they're ready for customers to go to the trailhead. So now you can't get very far. Just one walk. So that's all I have. Any questions? So please, please come to the budget meeting on November eighth. Bring your questions. I, I felt like there are questions here that we need to ask and get answered, and it is over. The work session. We're telling you today they're coming, so that's good. We want, we want lots of.
And our participation would be as members of the public, giving public comment, is that correct?
We'll see how they run it, okay? It's, I, I don't know, you know, we've never really had public people at the budget sessions when I've been involved. Usually have the department heads who then come forward and answer our questions, but it could change a little bit if we have people who have interests and want to understand how the policy, how the procedure all works.
We're going to do this better next year. We're going to, we're going to have the department heads here. It's just a lot easier.
Well, and if we.
Rather than me saying, uh, I think it's, you know, because I didn't put together their C I P, I just collected and bring it to you. So it'd be super helpful to have them here, any maps that we may need, any visuals of showing, you know, hey, here's the hose that we need to replace, or here's the hose we replaced last year, but we didn't replace all of it, we need to now update this portion of the hose inventory, whatever that may be, and so we'll do it that way.
We, we could do it together.
Yeah, here.
And the planning commission. Would be that joint meeting?
Uh, that'd be up to the board, but yeah, that'd certainly be.
I mean, you know, then the questions would all get asked, and it would all be at one time.
So in terms of the scheduling of this, so it starts at nine o'clock?
Yeah, this is the first time they're doing it all in one day.
Right, so how, is it scheduled so that, for example, the department heads do the C I P stuff first, and then the township board gets into the the details of other items then, or?
Well, no, Danny, we've never done it. If, if I was queen, I would have each department come in, just like it's on our form here, and go through it, but.
Oh, you don't even know if they're going to come in?
Well, I hope, I think they'll come.
Oh, the department heads will be there.
Yeah, because they, they.
But we don't know where they're going to go first, or second, or.
So, so the, the budget meeting, is that operations budgets, is that all kinds of budgets? It's not just the capital budget, because that would take six hours to go through eight items.
The township budget, so it's the whole deal.
That's some deadly stuff there, Danny.
That's what I'm saying, if I, if we could, like, you know, if we wanted to skip part of it, attend part of it, I just wondered what the schedule was.
I'll see if she has an agenda.
Agenda, okay, good.
And then we'll make sure that you get that. I would think each department head, I would think that their capitals are going to be under their budget, and so it's going to be through the whole day. So the water department, their capitals will be during their water department budget. Fire department, so it's, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Except for me, I didn't ask for any.
You didn't ask for anything?
A new hip, you want a new hip?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm asking for a merry-go-round though. I won't be the most popular person, but I still ask. The insurance people might like me.
Is it going to have gold ring?
It's going to have a, it's going to have a place so the kids can't fall off and get stepped on, you know. When you were a kid, you ran the merry-go-round. Remember that?
I remember.
Getting kicked in the head?
I remember being knocked out by a merry-go-round.
We have the same merry-go-round going, and we love it. I don't think it costs five thousand dollars, but it is.
Oh, it's more like twenty.
Well, that's okay.
I looked into it since you had brought it up.
I keep making a big deal about it. Sometimes you just have to keep going, right, Bethany?
Anything else? Uh, nine B, recreation committee report.
Yep, the rec committee got together last week, and we discussed the community survey. In light of the pending Jacob Betty Veterans Home relocation, they decided to defer on requesting any recreational amenities at this time. Once there's actual property to look at or plan. You know, I did bring up the merry-go-round to them, so they said, uh, well, the merry-go-round could go at Lions Field probably, but they decided to defer on any capital improvement requests for the year.
Lions Field shared with Chocolatet Township?
No, just the, the moniker, the Lions Club of Marquette helped, you know, develop both Chocolatet Township's park and our park.
Also, there's two Lions Fields, one in Chocolatet and one in.
I don't.
Lions, yeah, the, well.
Yeah, look, I, I know a little bit of history because my dad was the market township Lions Club, and that's how the park started, so Jason's right, yeah.
Is the, that one, is Amboni still in use or available to use?
Yeah. Oh, and I'll select the report that the tennis court slash now pickleball court has been completed, and it's getting lots of use already.
Road committee report.
I think Planner Powers gave you a report at the last meeting, and there wouldn't be anything new because they haven't met again, so.
Planning and zoning report.
I have been steeped in compatible renewable energy ordinance, and recently, actually this afternoon, received correspondence from Attorney Zappa now that the Public Service Commission has come out with some of their thoughts on the ambiguity of a lot of that document. Not, not our proposed document, but the, the legislation that leading, that's leading us to this. So I will be consulting with him tomorrow, and we actually hope to have a public hearing at our next meeting on the thirteenth. I will schedule that, provided Roger and I could come up with the zoning language that is amenable to both of our goals and objectives here. And that, and what we think the planning commission would want to, so. We are working on that vehemently, and we're trying to get something in place as soon as possible. Obviously, you know, with the winter months coming, we don't have any pending applications for large-scale wind or solar, but we definitely want to be in a position to where we have something in place prior to next construction season, and really just as soon as possible. We could potentially have something adopted in either December or January, which would be pretty good. Interestingly enough, there's not a lot of places or zoning districts that, if you followed even the state's rules, where these could go. And then if we were to utilize LIDAR or topography, it could be reduced even more. So, not that we're going to do a big study on where wind and solar could go. Obviously, solar needs to have some flat terrain in most cases. Wind could be a little bit more diversified as far as, you know, topography and, and the like, but I think we're in a pretty good position with our community just because of the rugged nature of our specific site and situation here in the township. And then we have a lot of residential areas and, and things of that nature, so once you get into the larger tracts of land, a lot of those are held by timber companies, or they're held by
Resource production.
State, yeah. Resource production's really the only district zoning-wise where I think it would actually be viable, and so we'll be looking at that when we put it into our ordinance. We don't want to discriminate, obviously you can't, but there are certain parameters that eliminates quite a bit of the community from being suspect to that type of.
But I mean, some of the resource production area that some of these lumber companies are selling off, like recently there was either two hundred and thirty or three hundred and twenty acres, I can't remember which which way the digits go, but, that a lumber company put up for sale on the highland area west of Eagles Nest Road. And, you know, that might be unsuitable for building, but it might be suitable for some solar project, you know, because it's a pile, I, I don't know.
Right.
Speculate.
So yeah, we'll stay on top of that and hope to have a, a solid draft to you ahead of the meeting, but then something to actually consider moving forward at, at your next meeting in November.
You get on the court case for longer? That you know of?
Um. Yes. The court did rule on, let me get this right, Dr. Peslo wanted us to stay, and that was not accepted by the court.
Also, it's done.
Well, no, but there's also then whether or not there was an open meetings violation between Attorney Zappa and zoning board of appeals member Marks. That has not been ruled on yet, so that's kind of the second part of that, but there's a different law consulting firm assisting us with that. So I don't want to say too much about it. I'm happy to share correspondence that I received not too long ago with you on that, provided I can get permission from the manager to do so.
So that's something new, is that?
Yeah, no, it was a positive transmission as far as the, our position, you know, did the did the Z B A have the ability to rule on that document? Uh, no, they didn't, and, and that was clarified also.
They rule on the statute of limitations?
It would go, yeah, it goes right to circuit court, so that's kind of the next step. That, as I understand it.
I, I didn't mean that, I meant the Open Meetings Act with John Marks.
I, I don't know, there's, no, that hasn't been ruled on yet.
I didn't even know that, that was part of the suit.
Well, it, it was, but we certainly have attorney-client privilege, and, you know, if there's something that you need to reach out to our attorney on, you, you have that ability to do so in confidence, in most cases, so. It works the same for a board member or a Z B A member or staff. So.
And anything, any update with Renovari at all, with anything different with that?
Not to my knowledge, uh, no.
And the Blight Ordinance, where is that with?
That is in the attorney's hands as well.
Is there a timeframe for that?
I'm hoping to have the, both of those for the November meeting. The Blight Ordinance could be a board action, though. For instance, it would be great to get the planning commission's blessing. For instance, it would be great to get the planning commission's blessing on it, but then it would go directly to the board and they can adopt it at a meeting.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then, nothing new with the West Palm, as far as?
No, yeah, no, if I had some good news to tell you, I, I would tell you for sure.
And, is there any possibility of trying to get some highway lighting on forty-one? Some, somehow or some way, it's just, especially this time here, so dark, so early there, and so hard to see everything, and I know we talked about it before. I kinda remember that, just kinda-
Yeah, it's very expensive.
Um, I mean, the state would have to kind of do something.
Yeah, that being said, um, you know, we can certainly approach MDOT and ask them their thoughts on it. You know, it is a lot more of an urban environment now than it was twenty years ago, and if we wanna continue to develop pathways along the highway, um, it's almost a necessity that we'd have to have some sort of additional lighting there, just, otherwise we'd be setting ourselves up for some tragedies, in my opinion. Um, so, yeah, let's, I can ask MDOT about that or what their thoughts are, if they have any of those plans in their capital improvement program. Otherwise, we're looking at funding it ourselves and it would be a heavy lift, but I'm not saying it couldn't be done, even if we did it one fixture at a time.
I think it should be helpful.
Yeah, no doubt, um, and sometimes, uh, even when you have brand-new striping out there, I've noticed, uh, if it's wet, you really can't see the, I mean, when it's dry, it's beautiful, it looks great, I can see the white, yellow, but when it's wet, it's really tough.
Terrible.
Just making a note of that.
And even, even though it was big highlights that these have on the intersection, the bypass there, and, um, they're arguing about who owned those lights, and I remember, like Andrew told me that the town, or the, uh, state told the city of Marquette that they're responsible for them, and the city said, no, we're not, you are, because you installed them, and so they just, they argued about that, and they're just sitting there not being used now, so, 'cause the, uh, holy whatever's roasting, they can't change those lights anymore.
Hmm. I know that, uh, we are responsible, or we were responsible for installing the roundabout lighting. Um, that was something that luckily we received a grant for. Otherwise, those would have been two hundred and fifty thousand apiece, I think they were, and then ended up getting them all done for twenty-five thousand out of our pocket, I believe, because of the grants, so.
Because of the electricity.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so, you know, those roundabouts are expensive. But they're life-saving, right?
It's, yeah, I mean, there's a categorical change in traffic flow throughout the corridor. I mean, there's a couple times, maybe at lunch, when I go home to let the dogs out, or, um, you know, if I leave work late around five, it's, you can wait a couple minutes to get your turn, but in most other cases throughout the day, it's pretty, pretty flowing.
And, you know, I, the one bad thing about roundabouts is that it doesn't create a traffic break like the lights used to do before. So if you're trying to, you know, cross a highway, there's no traffic break anymore like it used to be, you have to wait a lot longer now, but I guess that's just-
As a pedestrian?
No, as a car, like if you're, if you're trying to cross the highway, um, you know, and get out and turn around, you know, you can't go straight across anymore, but if you wanna get out, there used to be the, the stoplight there which would create traffic breaks, you know, like, it doesn't-
Yeah, commerce does.
Right, right.
Like if you're heading from the west and coming to go to Super One, let's say.
Or coming from the, from, coming and going east.
Yeah.
There's nothing at all, it's just a constant stream, and, uh, I don't know, you can do all that, you don't wanna put another stoplight out there, obviously, you can't.
Right.
All this, but it's, it's really hard.
Patience, Jim, is what we need in this world, yeah.
I know, I know. I kinda hate to break this, bring this up in a way, but it just seems like it's just kinda getting worse and they're not doing much about it, it's nine oh-six technology.
Yeah, I've got two emails into, uh, their CEO. In fact, I sent, uh, a follow-up email, just said bump on it. Um, my next move will be to call him, both the exterior condition and the-
Yeah, they've just been throwing all their garbage out there and, you know, I mean, there, there's something they can do with that, I know they don't have anywhere for the trucks and all that.
We'll be having a sit-down with them soon.
The solution is they're not even there.
Well, that's not our fault.
I know.
Um, they, they grew exponentially and they need to accommodate their growth in a way that complies with our ordinance.
Can you mind just where that location is again?
The old township hall. Corner of, uh, four ninety-two and, uh, Red Street.
Okay, thanks.
You think that maybe they didn't know where the boundary line was on the north side of their building there, because they, they were using a lot more of that, um, credit union law than what they can use now, and maybe they just, it wasn't surveyed?
Yeah, I, I think the previous owner of that property probably gave them the ability to use it, and now, if you remember, they were using, um, Mount Manufacturing's property for a spell, which was temporary. And, um, you know, we wanted them to move it off their property, so they did that, and now they're on their property wholly, but it's, yeah, it's, like I said, I noticed it right away, and, um, it's, my request to speak with them has fallen on deaf ears, so the next is just a letter. I, I didn't, I usually don't go that route unless I have to. Uh, I'd rather work through a situation with the property owner, but if it takes that to get their attention and sit down for a meeting, that's, that's what I'll do.
It's like they're not even trying to kinda keep it neat there.
Right, right.
That's kind of my thought on it, you know, at least you could keep it clean and you, uh, got there and put it somewhere all the way. It's not, but-
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that he's aware the planning commission has noticed it as well.
Okay. That's it, Jase?
Yeah, uh, business licenses will be going out, typical end-of-the-year stuff, um, hopefully, uh, at our December meeting, we'll get you a compiled list of our permits and what we've issued, values, things of that nature. And, an updated zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hey, any announcements, anyone?
We're using new technology tonight, um. You know, doing meeting minutes has always been kind of the bane of my existence.
Yeah.
Um, because why would you wanna listen to a meeting that you've already been to? So this is a tool called Plod, and this is a microphone. So then when we're done with our meeting tonight, um, I will go and Bluetooth that to my phone, and it will produce through AI a summary of all of our discussions. And it also does, um, in the case of, if you needed transcripts, it produces that as well. Pretty cool, pretty, uh, neat to find stuff like that and be able to utilize it, uh, in, in our capacity anyway. And it just does a fantastic job. So yeah, it produces a PDF or a Word document, um, and then from that we can glean specifics and introduce them into, um, the meeting minutes. So, the format of the meeting minutes will remain the same, but you might notice some changes in how we describe the, the topics.
Is this the first one you're using, Wes, now?
This is the first time using it, yeah.
And the videotaping of the meetings?
Yeah, those still will go on YouTube.
Will continue, so there's any discrepancy, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is it recording on there, or is it sending it to a phone, or?
No, it's recording, and then, um, you know, tomorrow morning or whatever, I will, uh, connect it to Bluetooth to the phone, and then I have an app on the phone, and it says, would you like to create a summary of the recording, and that's it.
You have to format it somehow, so that will kinda go for what you want?
Yeah, what we'll do is request a Word document that we can then save on our, you know, email to each other, like Eric and I, or we can save it to the server, and then go in there and glean what we need to, to produce our meeting minutes, as opposed to listening to the meeting again.
So was it a purchase package?
Hmm?
Purchase it?
Yeah, it was a hundred and fifty dollars, well within my budget.
So how does it distinguish between speakers?
Well, that it doesn't do unless you were to use your name, like, you know, Steve every time. Um, sometimes it picks up on names, um, and, um, but we'll know based on attending the meeting who said what, basically.
So we don't have to always say, Danny here?
Right, yeah.
But we can.
We could.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, it's really neat, um-
It's called what? Tell me the name of it.
P-L-A-U-D. Plod, like, I think Plod's the base word of a plod. And, uh, yeah, it's on Amazon, just really slick.
It'd be great for college kids.
They're already using much more than we know about.
Well, there's probably some apps on the phone that do that.
What AI do it?
Someone gave their kids AI, they wanted the university to escape them appropriately.
Oh.
All I'll say is, if you think that technology's amazing, that's, that's on the market, like, what do they have that's not on the market, you know, that they're using? For instance, you know, you could mention things about golf clubs, and then all of a sudden, you know, you'll be, you'll get a bunch of ads for golf clubs, so it's always listening. Remember that, young buck? He knows, he probably knows more than us about it.
Hey, any public comment? You good? Okay, anybody else?
I have more people come up to me, actually, tonight someone came up to me about the blight on the Big Bay Highway, and I told them that we were addressing it, and they listened to our meeting, and that a new blight ordinance will be coming out soon. So, you know, there are lots of people watching.
I have an informational piece here I'd like to share with everybody.
Congratulations.
Thanks. This is a, a notice I saw in the mining journal for, uh, a public hearing that Forsyth Township is gonna have about, uh, short-term rentals, and, uh, I found the, uh, section three definitions interesting because, uh, they go to great lengths to determine that, uh, evidence of a parcel being used, a residential, for a short-term rental can include any means or method used to communicate such rental to potential guests, including where the mouth goes and where's, and electronic means such as via Airbnb, Verbo, Lippie Books, and Receptors, so apparently Forsyth is, is, uh, drilling down on tracking, uh, the, uh, the use, and I just wondered, I thought that was interesting, and I know we had had some discussion about software that might help our township track the use, and I just wondered if, maybe, if you ever talk to the Forsyth person, ask them what their, you know, I don't know, was that?
My comment would be, uh, I believe in zoning regulations that are simple and enforceable.
Okay.
And, I mean, looking at it, it's a great definition, but how enforceable is it?
Well, I just mean, like, if, if, like, I think Eric brought it up at one of our meetings, that there's software programs that can track.
Yeah, it's a service, it's five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I just thought it was, I don't know whether that was still ad viable or, uh, even be considered.
I don't think we have a huge problem with it.
Okay. I'm not advocating for it, I just-
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna say, there are people who have Airbnbs, and if you have people that come up every year, you don't use the online service anymore, you just text a host and be like, hey, we're coming up, can I just van-? It's really tough to track up. Well, we do the best we can, and I think we have a good system in place and we haven't had any issues with it. We haven't had any short-term rental applications in a while. I think there's also a shift happening in that sector as well, and, um, yeah, hopefully people are gonna start renting them out long-term again, so we have pausing for people that we need here, working here.
Any more comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize to the young man, sometimes fists fly here, so it wasn't very exciting tonight, sorry.
It's all right. No pitchforks.
Yeah, this one wasn't exciting at all.
Yeah, yeah, pretty lame.
Main takeaways, capital improvement program. Super helpful for department heads to communicate with planning commission and the township board about their needs for large scale expenditures, whether it's a fire truck, or you need, um, new water service lines, throw up community, or fire hydrants, there's all kinds of things that we, um, install and, and are responsible for, so that's a, that's a key takeaway from that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Any comments? In adjourned, uh, eight thirteen.
Do you need to sign anything for you?
Uh, yes, please, thank you.